Meeting of the Howard's Board of Appeals on this date, which is the 25th of January 2023. The purpose of the meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaws of the town of Howard's in the Massachusetts Zoning Act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video or record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During the meeting, the Chair will recognize the Board members and what I will do at this moment if the Board will, starting on my right, introduce themselves. Go for it.
Kenneth Dixon, first Board meeting as an alternate.
Tim Bailey.
Chris Murphy. Alexander Donahue.
Dave Ryer.
Joe Beasley.
John August, also first meeting as an alternate.
And at that, at this time, I'll take the moment to welcome the two Board members and thank you for taking your time to assist the town. The Chairs will, I will ask to call the cases on the agenda.
You want me to, you want to call it?
I don't care. I'm sure he's called. He's doing nothing. He's paying up for work.
The clerk does this.
Not playing ball, please. Look at it rusted.
I'm going to call it. Case number 2022-40, Mary Beth and Joel Rodman. Alexander Raney of RBC Properties LLC, I assume is representing them. 239 Scudder Avenue, Hyannis, Mass. Owner of the property located at 43 Sherwood Road. Assessors map 106, parcel E128 in the RR zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit to alter the deck on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws 325-54 in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 10.
At this time, I'd like to welcome the petitioner. And if you would please identify yourself and if you are a property owner or a representative of the property.
My name is Alex Raney. I'm representing Joel and Mary Beth on this project as the builder. And I think it's a pretty cut and dry one. We ran into a situation on this property at 43 Sherwood of new septic sewer lines going in, per the town order. And they have run the new lines out around the back of the house, as you would typically. And in doing so, the rear deck needed to be removed. It was also in pretty bad disrepair. So it did need to be repaired at some time or replaced. So in finding that they were non-conforming, when I first took a look at this with the old deck, and seeing that the old deck was larger than what they wanted to replace, that's why we're sitting here in front of you today. And basically, we're asking to be less non-conforming with a new, smaller deck. And egress, the egress is not within the 20-foot setback on the side of the property, as you can see on the plot plan. And the new deck would be smaller and less non-conforming by about three feet. It's actually shown on the plan that you guys have, slightly larger than the as-built will show if we're allowed to build the proposed deck. So that's, like I said, pretty basic, cut and dry, should be an easy one.
Right. At this time, I'm going to designate who will be voting on this particular petitioner's case. It will be Joe Beasley, Tim Bailey, Chris Murphy, Dave Ryer, and myself. All right. Now I'm going to open this up to the Board for questions regarding the case. If I can start off with my left.
No questions.
No questions.
Could you get the construction vehicles on the property so they're not out there on the road?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And when do you expect to do this?
Pretty much as soon as you guys allow the appeal period to pass. I would say we're probably looking at the 1st of March, somewhere in there, if the building permit gets through. I know things have been a little slow lately, but I think there's a 20-day appeal, so we're talking middle of February to get approval into the building apartment. And then it's just a matter of them getting us the...
And how long do you think the project will go?
Maybe a week, week and a half.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Plenty of room to park all the way up that left side. The Shell driveway is probably six cars deep, so shouldn't be an issue there.
Yeah. I don't do questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I agree. Very straightforward. No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Excellent.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak with regard to the...
Joel, you're for this or against it?
I am the property owner. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and present and we...
I ask you, would you, before you start, would you do me a favor? Would you walk up to that podium, introduce yourself?
Sure.
And your address.
Thank you, Board. My name is Joel Rodman. I'm the property owner, along with my wife, Mary Beth. We live at 43 Sherwood Road. And we just thank you for the opportunity to present our project in front of you. We feel that it's important that we do things the way that it was set up to be in town. And I know it's a fairly small project, but we just thank you for taking the time to listen. And we thank you for all that you folks do for the town. I know we got two new Board members here, and I just think it's great that people that support and participate in town politics. So thank you, folks.
Thank you.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay. The public hearing has been closed. I'm sorry. I hope I have a vote. All right. All those in favor of the project, please raise your hands.
Close the public hearing.
Okay. I'll make a motion in case number 2022-40. I move that the Board grant a special permit in this case, having found that the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw and the GAD and the Deirdre cases. As the proposed project, as shown on the site plan, it is not going to create any new nonconformity and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. The special permit is granted subject to the following conditions. One, during the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property and not on any public street or road. Two, it's a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard's zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 7, and the Howard's zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
All right. Is there any discussion by the Board?
No, we need a second first.
Second again.
Okay. The only comment, as I said in the motion, I think it, normally we'd say it intensifies one or more nonconformity, but in fact, from what I can see, they're lessening the nonconformity. So I didn't mention that in the motion, but certainly it's not going to have any substantial detriment on the neighborhood above the existing structure.
It's always my goal.
I recommend that the Board go in favor of the motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Make a motion.
You've got to stamp the land.
It is 20 days, right, on this one? The appeal period? Is it 10 or 20 on these guys?
20.
Thought it was 20 on these guys.
I think it's 20 in appeal.
It's 20 from when it's filed.
From when it's filed. Yep.
You would know. I don't remember.
I would know. I was before the Board in November.
Sometimes it's 10, sometimes it's 20. I get my committees confused.
All right. Okay. Plans for that one? All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Call the next case? Please. Case number 2023-01, Ripple Realty Trust. Owner of the property located at 338 Bank Street, Assessors map 41, parcel D1-3 in the CV in Historic Districts. The applicant seeks a special permit over the alternative of variance to construct a foundation, finish a second floor and deck onto a nonconforming structure pursuant to the zoning, the Howard's zoning bylaws 325-52 and 54A in MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 10. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll ask you, when you get the opportunity, get your jacket off to...
My name, I apologize. I've been running.
If you would introduce yourself.
My name is Gregory Winston. I'm trustee of Ripple Realty Trust. And my partner, David, and I own the real estate known as Thatcher's Forge, which is actually 338 Bank Street. And I hopefully have provided you all with packets that show the existing structure, the location of the structure, the intended use of the structure. And I'm going to obviously let you, as the professionals, tell me. I was under the opinion that I needed a special permit, but I'm prepared for either. I would prefer to go with a special permit, but we have an unusual piece of real estate here. Are you all somewhat familiar with the Thatcher's Forge?
Yes, I think everybody's heard it.
Okay. Then, basically, I have a little, little piece of history here, which I'm sure you would love to read at some future, future time. But it was originally, it was built as a forge. And it was built in, according to Obed Brooks, in this letter here dated April 14, 1852, to his brother Henry. And says, "Mr. Thatcher has moved to his old house and wants to, has moved from his old house and wants to settle here and carry on his trade as blacksmith." And I would, I'm summarizing here. Basically, he's asking, Obed Brooks is asking his brother Henry to ask his father, would he please let Mr. Thatcher have a little piece of land so that he could open a blacksmith shop? So that's where we, that's where we start. And I believe in your packets, you should have photographs of the building as it existed when my partner and I bought it.
Yep.
Two, three years, there you go. Okay. We took down the, there was an overgrown maple tree. And we took that tree down, and then, of course, you saw this, the side of the building was, was falling apart. So, so here's the situation. We have, we have a building that is historically significant. We've already, we've already made the case to the HDHC, and I spent 25 years on Historic Districts, so I, I understand the history, and that's the reason I brought this little brief summary to you. Our, our complication is that the families, over the years, sold off the real estate and left only the barn, with about 20 feet to the south and about 18 to 19 feet to the west. And basically, it's on Bank Street. So what I've done is I've provided you with the actual layout as the pre-existing building and the existing building. We're not asking for anything other than historically, because there are some pretty cool old beams and things inside the building. So we are willing to take, spend the money to lift the building off of what's not even a foundation at this point in time. It's, it's sort of sinking into the ground. But anyway, we're going to lift the building up, and we're going to put a frost wall, a foundation, and then a slab in order to secure the building. Then I have provided in my packet a plan in order to make this, in order to do the necessary improvements to the building. It has to be somewhat profitable in the future. And given how much town, how much this town needs housing, I am proposing, we are proposing a one-bedroom apartment above the barn. So to be concise, the footprint of the barn will not change at all. The only thing that you will see, you have in front of you, is the deck on the back. In order to access the second-floor apartment, we do need a staircase going up the back, which is actually a budding to my dear friend Tony's gas station, but there's a propane tank back there. So we're not expanding the foundation, and we're not expanding the building in any way, but we are putting on a, are proposing to put on a deck and a staircase to access the second-floor apartment. Now, as far as the street scape is concerned, the building will remain exactly the same. The only differences would be that we would be putting a dormer on the north side of the building, which faces Tony's gas station, Town Hall, and then a doghouse dormer on the south side of the building to give the upstairs enough space so that you, we could have a very small, one-bedroom apartment. Now, we've also gone through a lot of work with the Board of Health and with the, with Dan Crotto to design a septic system, because we're somewhat tight. So if you have this Moran Engineering plan in front of you, you can see that there's a, what's specified as a two-foot open foundation that gives us the exact amount of space that we need to leach the septic for the one-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment. When we speak of, you know, apartments, we're talking about bedrooms, not bathrooms. But it's going to be a one-bedroom apartment with one bathroom. And the goal here is to keep the iconic look of the building as, as it is, so that when you come up from Howard's Port to Howard's Center, you see the barn on the left-hand side. It's almost the first thing you see as you come into Howard's Center, before you even see the library, before you even see the Windstead Inn, you see the barn. So it's important to us, particularly to me, that we keep that iconic look of the barn identical to the way it is today. The only changes that we're making, as I say, are the dormer on the north and the doghouse dormers on the, on the east side and the west side, which you actually wouldn't see, because anything on the west side of the building faces Tony's propane tank. So I think I've presented pretty much, so our hardship here is clearly that we have a very small piece of real estate with a piece of, with an antique building on it that's iconic and definitively a part of the history of this town. But in order to do, to keep it and restore it, we clearly need a place for someone to live. So that's the reason for the request for a one-bedroom apartment. And I think we've covered all of our details as far as the septic design is concerned. Dan worked very closely with, with the town of Howard's. We were overwhelmingly approved by the Historic District Commission. And I'm a little bit confused, clerically maybe, but I also have to visit with the planning board. But I'm not sure. Usually, it seems like I would see them and then you guys, but I was told that I had to see you first.
All right. Based upon that, I'm going to designate who is going to vote on this. It'll be the same five people that voted on the last one, which will be Chris, Dave Ryer, Joe Beasley, Tim Bailey, and myself. All right. Does the Board have any question for the applicant?
No, at this time.
No? Okay.
If this person were to have a car, where is they, or are they expected to park?
Okay. Where, and that's, that's, that's another question. Very, very good question, actually. And I think that's maybe why planning wanted me to come for site plan review, but there's really no reason for site plan review, so I've asked for a waiver of site plan review. Because if you look at the building, you'll notice that there's three garages downstairs. And that was originally where the horses and the carriages were parked. So those three garages will remain as is. The apartment will be upstairs. So that we're not asking for any change in site plan whatsoever, other than to improve it like Tony has done with his place. We're, you know, obviously going to improve the landscape and the roof and the design and, and, you know, the color will be rickred, as every barn should be. The barn doors will be white, just as they are. It will just be renovated.
Okay. Will the garages actually be used for vehicle parking?
The garages will be, only one of them will be used for vehicle parking. The, the question is, and it could be, it could go either way. It's going to be a slab. I could get into details, but it would probably woggle you if I got into details as to why it's going to be a slab, because if I wanted to use it to its highest and best use, I'd put a full basement under it. But, but many years ago, before Tony, there was an easement granted to the owner of the gas station to leach under the building. So when we went to ask for a full basement, we weren't allowed it, because a portion of the building is already being encumbered by the neighbors.
No. My only concern is, is there going to be enough room there for a car, assuming it went in headfirst, to back out without coming onto Bank Street? Because you know what that's like in the summer, the traffic.
I cer, I certainly do. And if you, if you look at the plan, you will notice that where the septic is designed...
Yes.
There's room for three cars, one, two, three, if you were to go, if you were to go back, you know, one in front of another, in front of another.
Yeah.
It's, it's not, it's not that wide, but it is fairly, fairly deep.
That would be my next question. Can you put like a gravel pull-off so at least during the summer, they could leave the cars outside, where they wouldn't have to bank and back into Bank Street with all of the summer traffic?
Oh, no. That, that, oh, that's definitely our plan. I've lived on Bank Street all my life, so, no, no one will be backing onto Bank Street. No. Basically, we're going to, we're going to have a small apron that'll come off from each one of those doors, where there is, was at one time, an apron. These will be cobble aprons. But that's the only thing that we're going to change. We're not going to actually, so, so, so you can actually swing out over the gravel, I mean the apron, which will be, which will be level. It won't be raised. So you do not have to back onto the street.
Good. Because you know what it's like during the summer. They're crazy. And I've had a couple of close calls coming out of the library, the exit, of course, it's one-way, people coming in the wrong way. That happens fairly frequently during the summertime. Just for the benefit of the Board, I think we need to look at a variance under the bylaw, Section 325-54A7, alteration or extension of other structures. Since this is not an existing, single- or two-family residential structure, it's a barn, I believe we have to find that they meet the requirement for a variance. This is a pretty unique case. And as far as I'm concerned, I think they can meet the hardship requirement in wanting to preserve the historic barn. I think it would be a hardship if they are forced to take the barn down. And I think if they're, they're going to have any use of this property, except what they're proposing, they're going to have to raise the barn and get a variance anyway to use it, to put another structure there. So I would have no problem in granting a variance. I think it's a reasonable position that we could take, that they do meet the hardship requirement. And I think they meet the other requirements for the grant of a variance. It's, the circumstances are unique to this structure, and actually, this property does not generally affect the district. It will not result in any substantial detriment to the public good if we grant them a variance. I think it would be for the benefit of the public to preserve the structure. And the granting of their variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. You know, those are all the statutory requirements for a bylaw. I think we would want to put the construction time requirement on them, just because it's so crazy there during the summer, the traffic situation.
Well, that's been my biggest, my biggest problem, and I, I'll be honest with you. It's, it's been a little convoluted, as you all know. Town Hall has been in a bit of a people with some of our department heads coming and going, and clerks are all brand-new. So this, to me, was, I was trying to help Shayla, and Shayla was trying to help me work through this, because I was thinking planning before Board of Appeals, but she said, "No, Board of Appeals first, then planning." I said, "Okay, let's do this." But I'm, I'm agreeable, and that's the reason that I put in the application special permit or if the Board feels necessary, variance.
When did you anticipate doing the work?
I wanted it done last month. I had no idea. We had a meeting with the department heads back in October, and no one ever, ever got back to us. And finally, I had to get back to the department, to the town and say, "Where do we stand? What boards do we have to go before?" I didn't. And then it wasn't until...
Well, normally, if we put the construction time restriction, you could not do your outside work anyway between June 30 and Labor Day.
I would like to have this done in March, if I could. I'd like to, I'd like to have it under construction right now. We were actually asking for just at least the lifting of the building and the founding to be done in advance. But I still have one more hearing with the planning board, which is not scheduled until the 14.
The other way we could do it is if you can get all the construction vehicles on site. Do you own the Winston, it's, or is that yours? Yeah. So I was thinking, that's exactly what I was thinking. You could probably get them on one of the properties.
Yeah. And, and, and the reason that I, that I'm applying for this separately from the Windstead Inn is, it's twofold, actually. The Windstead Inn, I've, my partner and I have owned for 35, 40 years. We previously owned the Windstead Retirement Center, and we also own 109 Bank Street, I mean, 109 Parallel Street. So, I mean, this is all our neighborhood. But the, the reason that I don't have the advantage of, of doing anything other than this hardship is that I literally took everything I had and bought this piece of real estate, because it was for sale all of a sudden overnight, and I didn't want to see anything happen to it. So I didn't want to co-mingle finances, so it has to be a separate lot. I can't...
I understand that, but we're just saying, and Chris has the same idea, instead of putting a time requirement, if you would keep all of the construction vehicles either on this property or on your other property, so they're not on Bank Street, we wouldn't have to restrict the time period.
Right.
It's, it's really a traffic...
If you restrict the time period, that would be a problem for me, because I want to get it done. But no, I would like to have this done by end of April.
Before April?
Yeah.
Because he's going to use my property.
No, no, I understand. I also know how contractors go. And the other thing, I really would like a condition, but I want to hear what you say. I would like a condition that when you're done, you keep the Thatcher's Ford sign really about where it is now. I mean, since it's a...
I mean, I think that this is such an important...
I love that sign.
I think this is such an important little note. I can read it to you if you'd like.
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. This is also, these are historic notes that were left inside the barn. And, and I know, because I'm a historian myself. So this is the first note from, from Henry. Now, I will show you. If you look at this very carefully, you see the very lower corner, that most of the document, a good portion of the document, has disintegrated.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But it's all the story about Nellie. Nellie is the black horse. Nellie's the black horse, and she will be very much a part of this. It says, and it... It says, and I apologize, because I'm tired, but, "Nellie was the symbol of the lively industry that carried on beneath the roof of which she was mounted. The shoeing of horses. This building, now designated, was at that time a blacksmith shop with Anvil and Forge presided over by Mr. Harry Murphy, who lived on the west side of Bank Street, second house from the corner of Parallel Street. At times when business was brisk, Mr. Murphy was assisted by Mr. Isaiah Kelly, who took over entirely some 50 years ago, when Mr. Murphy became hostiliar to and gardener for Dr., and I'm going to say Smizer, who owned this house across the street, Dr. Smizer, and, and, and continued the blacksmith business. And then, his grandfather, Dr. Ralph Brett, was the proprietor of the drag goods store across the street, which was the Ford Brett family store, which was originally in Exchange Hall. And when Mr. Murphy died suddenly, Dr. Smizer was, there's a portrait of, 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 of Duck, of Mr. Murphy, that hangs in the Masonic Hall, which is, of course, you know, still standing next to where the old exchange was. So it goes on to explain, and the, the very end, you can't really understand, is that it ultimately became a repair shop for automobiles when no longer horses could be shown."
But you're okay with, you're okay with keeping the sign on the front?
Oh, my God, I would, are you kidding me? I would never let that sign go.
That's all I have.
It's now a condition.
It is. It will be a condition.
No, it's, it's really important.
I don't think I've got a conflict of interest, but we have a painting in our dining room of just this much of the building.
Really?
She, she just painted that part there. And with, when, you still had the antiques in the window. She's got some colored glass and whatnot, the woman that did the painting. Love that. But I don't think it hinders me from making a fair and objective determination in this case, the fact that I have that picture.
Not a poor taking pictures.
That's all I have.
Yeah.
Not a poor taking pictures.
All right, I, I'm in agree with Mr. Riya, and I do think there should be a condition on it, regardless. All right, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, it's funny, the, I'm totally in agreement with what you came up with, Dave, for, for variance. In fact, it makes it easier for me, because I have a concern sometimes with these special permits, even though Gale case allows us, you're already non-conforming, but that deck's taken half of that property now. So you're going from 18 feet non-conforming to eight feet. And that seems like a bit, pretty big chunk of, you know, I can see going an extra couple of feet, and we've seen this before, you're not the first person that's come up. However, it's clear that you need the deck and the stairs to get up there. So before that, I didn't understand fully why you had that deck the way you did. So there's a safety feature, and it makes a lot more sense, and a variance, that I'm not as concerned about, to say, overextending the Gale case thought.
And the one thing that, to be perfectly honest with you, it's not going to be surface area. So, so beneath that deck will, will, will be...
And it's a deck, it's not a foundation.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
I have no other questions.
No, I agree with what's, what's been said. No questions.
I, I do have a question, but of the chair, and that specifically, now, this is gonna be, there's gonna be a residence upstairs, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Does that, does that not fall under the additional dwelling unit? I'm a little confused, as we're creating a living dwelling, it's not gonna be a principal residence.
I think it is covered. It's, it's, we could, it's a fat of...
It's not additional, because there's no...
No, a new primary residence.
It's a barn, yeah.
So it's a primary residence, your building?
They're, they're just putting the residence in by putting the apartment in.
And there's no square footage of land is a concern? Or is that by the, by the regulations?
Well, that's why we had to give them a variance.
So the variance includes for the square footage? I didn't hear you say that.
Well, we haven't made a motion yet, but it's gonna be a variance to let them construct the foundation, finish the second floor and deck.
And the other question I had again for, for the chair is, does permission for change of use, because this is an expired change of use, does, is that also called, covered under the variance, the...
Yes.
Okay, no other questions.
How you gonna lift it? I was just...
I'm sorry?
How you gonna lift it to get the...
Well, Harry Ellis and Jamie Klein are together trying to figure that one out. They're...
I'll just drive by.
They're going to, they're, yeah, they're going to go in from the side. They're going to actually remove the shed piece, which is falling apart, and then they're gonna lift the main building, which is the post and beam section of the building. The, the side shed was, was built in the 1940s, 50s, when they needed an extra space to repair another car. So that wasn't originally there. So that's, that space will be rebuilt. But, yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll be lifted. It's costing us more to lift it, but the historic significance of the building is so important to me, that I, I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't have the heart to tear it down, I couldn't.
I don't blame you.
I just couldn't. But this is the only way that it makes any, that I can actually afford it. And ultimately, you know, someday, when I retire, it'll be the manager, the manager's orders to be in, in store.
All right, thank you. Is anybody in the public that wishes to speak? Having heard, the applicant have anything further they would like to...
Well, first, I'll move to, oh, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, I just want to ask you if there's any further information you'd like to present to the board.
I, I don't think that there's any further information. I can, I can honestly tell you that it certainly will not be in any way a detriment to the community, certainly not to the historic district, or to, or to the aquifer, inasmuch as we spent a good amount of money to get this septic system appropriately designed, so that it could all be contained on the property with the easement that is already existing, which my dear friend owns. And he would speak for me, but he loves me so much, he doesn't want to. But he doesn't have any disagreements.
All right, at this point here, I ask to be closed to the public.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
A second.
A second, Chris?
Aye.
All in favor, aye? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Any further discussion by the board on this matter?
Would you like a motion in the case?
Yes. Okay, I will move that in case number 2023-01 Ripple Realty Trust. The board grant the applicant a variance, having found that the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw and in MGL section 10, chapter 40A. The board finds that the circumstances in this case are unique, and that the loss, potential loss of a historic barn, if the variance is not granted, would constitute a hardship to the applicant. The variance is granted, so the applicant can construct the foundation, finish the second floor into a one-bedroom, one-bath apartment, and add a deck onto the existing non-conforming structure. The board further finds that this condition is specific to this property and does not generally affect the entire district, and that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good by the granting of this variance, and that its granting will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with this application. This variance is granted subject to the following conditions. One, during the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property or on the applicant's adjacent property, and not on any public street or road.
Because that means you and I have to work together.
Two, the applicant agrees to retain the Thatcher's Ford sign on the front of the building on the Bank Street side, that is, in approximately the same location where it is presently situated, so that everyone knows it is a historic building. And third, it's a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of this variance may be enforced as a violation of the Harwich zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL chapter 40A, section 7, and the Harwich zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
There you go. Second, anybody want to second that one?
Second.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got to give him the gavel for the, for variance. I can't, I can't understand, this is his problem.
Thank you.
It's a great project.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I like when people save historic buildings, as well as letting a rotten place, you know.
I wish I had something to say in 1964, when the town voted to tear down Exchange Hall, but I was young to vote.
Voted to what?
Tear down Exchange Hall.
Never really inked it.
So, just to be clear, what was the actual vote?
In favor.
In favor, how many in favor, and how many opposed?
All, all in favor.
Was it unanimous?
Yep.
Thank you so very much. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for saving.
You, you not only did me a favor, you did the town a favor.
That would have been a big loss.
Thank you so very much. Tony, thank you so much.
Anytime.
Have a good night.
You too, guys. Take care. Good luck in your project.
Yes.
Good luck with the planning board.
Yeah, good luck with the planning board. And I had the same question in the past, when I first started, why do we get it, and then the planning board get it? If they're not going to approve it, why...
I'm sorry?
Why wouldn't they have the planning board first, and then the Board of Appeals? Because that's like, almost, to me, it almost seemed backwards.
Um...
You know, I, I...
But I mean, it is what it is. We've had this discussion over the years, and there is no answer.
I'm the newbie, but I have to say that, you know, as you know, I was here in November and the, I had a meeting with all the town departments in August of last year, and his comment about getting zero response is a shared experience. It actually was a very good meeting, but it was like, hey, we want to start this like in October, November, you know, give us some guidance, what do we need to do? And it was, after that, it was...
In all fairness, I think you just bring up a great point, is that the turmoil, he mentioned it.
Yeah.
People were being changed around the town hall here, and we only just recently got ourselves a full-time building commissioner.
Yeah. And we have, what, three in two years, or...
Yes.
Yeah.
And there's been other movements, which you experienced, unfortunately, too.
Yeah, a lot of turmoil, a lot of turmoil.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I agree, and, and, you know, unfortunately, but I, I think people were closed-mouthed about that for a while. There was about a six-week period where I think the guy, the temporary guy from Chatham shut down and was doing nothing, and the new guy hadn't started yet, and honestly, nothing happened for about six weeks. No one, and no one wanted to say nothing was happening. And then, you know...
I think you're right.
It was...
All right. I'm going to enter this, into the, the record. The Chair, Mr. Sullivan, contacted the town attorney relative to 10 Home Street. You gentlemen were not here for that.
10, 10 Kings Road?
Kings Road, excuse me.
Actually, that was the same night as my...
That was, yes.
Yeah, so I heard the...
10 Kings Road. Because there was not a full voting board, a question arose relative to how to handle the voting on that particular case, if it were to come before the board. And the short answer from the attorney is, is yes, and I'm going to read this. As of May of 2007, annual town meeting, the town accepted general law, chapter 39, 23D, which allows the board to miss one meeting, only one, where testimony is taken and still be able to vote, provided the member has listened to a tape of the meeting or watched the video. Reviewing the minutes is not enough. The member will then give, will give a signed affidavit and submit it to the town clerk's office. The town clerk should have the affidavit form. It states, notwithstanding any general special law, to the contrary, upon municipal acceptance of this section, for one or more types of adjudicary, adjudicary hearing, a member of municipal board committee, let me see, voting on the matter, so duly through the member absence from no more than single session, shall certify in writing, as it was just stated, all evidence received at the missed session, which, whichever shall be, include the audio, video recording of the, of the session. The written certification shall be part of the record of the hearing. Nothing in this section shall change, replace, negate, or otherwise supersede applicant quorum requirements. This is coming up not only for this past property, but it's coming up as a result of affordable housing. This board is going to be seeing cases involving affordable housing, and there are certain requirements by the state relative to the voting on that. And we have, we're under a timeframe, when that is finally, if it's, when, even when it's brought before us. Okay? This is from the Chair, Mr. Sullivan. He's requesting that Dave Riya and Tim Bailey, who missed the November mailing, meeting, hear the case via the video, and be prepared to vote on the case, should it meet a vote. Now, this was supposedly going to be on for this month, but it, as you all know, it didn't make it. So, and not to assume anything, because you know what assuming means, it may be on next month. So if you would both take the opportunity to view that, and, because we are really kind of under the gun on something like that, all right?
I think Leisha said that it was going to come up in March, but that could change.
I hadn't heard, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that someplace, and maybe it was an email from her.
I thought I saw it March, too.
Did you see it? Yeah. Might have been in an email.
It was a chain, it was back and forth between Brian and Leisha.
Well, and town council hasn't given the opinion yet.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on there.
Yeah, yeah. We're not going to get into that.
The big deal for the new members with the 40Bs, the affordable housing, is it can't be done at a regular meeting. There will be, especially if it's this one down on...
Chloe Lane.
Sisson.
What's the name of the store?
Chloe Lane.
Yeah. That'll, that could go half a dozen, or eight or nine hearings. So there has to be a whole bunch of special hearings, but you're gonna have to have five people that are, been at all the hearings, or only missed one of them. That's the really big issue here, is if we do get that 40B. A volunteer board that has other things sometimes in their life. Yeah, I know, but... I know. It's a problem.
Is that, is that the one behind the police and fire station, if they're proposing?
Now, in, in all fairness to everybody in the board, and particularly the two new ones, let's do what Mr. Riya says, this can go on for quite a period of time, and it's not going to be on a normal Wednesday night. And the board is under a strict, strict timeframe by the state as to how we handle this. So...
Isn't it like 100 days or something?
Yeah, it's, it's a number of different dates in it, but I don't happen to have...
Yeah, there's a lot of, yeah, a lot of timeline.
But you're right.
You get it, you gotta do something within this amount of time, yeah.
And it's got to be done at the end, they have to be notifications and everything else. The other thing I may bring your attention to is, you see an empty room right now, you may very well see public interest. So consequently, the meetings may take a period of time that are not necessarily similar to this. Okay, just so you're aware of it.
And that's going to be a big deal, because it's, I think, 90 or 94 units.
Yes.
We, Al and I, were on the last 40B, which was the five or six units down in West Harwich, right off of Route 28, there across from Terry's Airport. They sit behind that nice yellow colonial. And we'd have 20, 25 people at that hearing, and that was only minimally controversial. But this one, the 94, we've already gotten letters, and people are already all stirred up about that one. So there'll be a lot of public... And then there was the one in Truro that had, that one went, they had, that one got pretty nasty. And then, of course, there's the one in Hyannis, the twin...
Yeah, Twin Brooks.
Yeah, Twin Brooks.
The Gulf, the Gulf.
First, the Hyannis.
That one in Truro was the one that went on for like a year and a half.
Yeah.
Truro was the motel they wanted to convert?
No, I don't think it was the hotel, they had...
It was wastewater.
That was the main, that was, that's what they settled in on, is the, the thing they argued about.
And they, they did extend the time period, I think, by agreement, because they got additional studies, and the experts couldn't agree, and ultimately, it was approved. I don't know if it went to litigation. I don't remember. I think one in Eastham went to litigation, and I know one in Hyannis went to litigation, these, these big projects. Normally, the, the small ones, six or eight, people don't wanna spend the money on that, they're not happy, but the, but the big ones, yeah, people get together and hire lawyers and...
Attorney Ford was representing the, not the applicant, but the opposition on the one up in Truro.
Okay.
I remember that. The reason I, I follow that closely, because I had just come on...
He's a good lawyer.
Yeah, he is. And I came on the board, and I said, oh, this was gonna happen. Because they were fighting, I know, about the waste treatment, I have a little bit of experience with that. And it was, they, they had a little package unit, not just a septic system, but a real waste treatment facility.
Pressure, pressure system?
Yeah. I don't know exactly, I didn't look into the details, but it was a, it was, it would've put out clean water, it probably absorbed, took care of nitrogen, the whole thing, but...
Would've been one of the few that actually work on Cape. Would've been one of the few that actually work on Cape.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't, the, the argument was, was it experimental, and, you know, of course. I, I, again, I didn't get into detail, I imagine this one's probably gonna have a septic issue, if it comes before us, I would think. Just because of the size of it.
The other thing I just wanna cover as well is the minutes of last month's meeting. If everybody has reviewed it, does anybody have any suggestions, changes, additions, deletions?
I was not here.
If not, all in favor of accepting the minutes of the meeting from the month of January? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna ask for now a motion to adjourn.
Can I jump in just for a second before we adjourn, Mr. Chair? Just for the benefit of, of the new person on the thing, and never wanting to violate the special meeting, or open hearing rules, how and where do I ask questions? But David, you were helpful just now, moments ago, before the meeting. But, for example, I have this question over square footage of the single-family residence that we just approved.
It's okay, as long as it's not about a specific case. You can ask general questions. The open meeting law really goes to specific cases.
Understood, but now I'm, I guess I'm talking about a specific case, when we just approved a variance, and I asked the question of, of the Chair about square footage. A single-family residence, I thought, in Harwich required forty thousand square feet, but in the variance that we talked about and approved, we, that wasn't brought up. I don't understand how that works.
Well, as long as we give the variance for the relief, it covers the fact that...
Covers, that's a blanket coverage of all other rules.
Right, because we're giving them approval for the project, so that they can go ahead no matter how many square feet they have on a variance.
There are requirements of hardship. The hardship has to be either the shape of the property, things like that, or the soil condition, there are things that have to be met. And in this case, it was clearly the shape and the, the property, very small property and... Because having listened to that forty-minute video on Kings Road that you brought up earlier, Mr. Chair, that was an issue, as I understood it, it was delayed because it's, it's just property, they're having a hard time, we, we were so focused on the fact that it's not twenty thousand square feet.
But they also have a primary residence on that, that plot of land.
Understand that, but it's a variance that says twenty thousand, we have a variance, or we have a standard that says on, on the single family, it says forty thousand, so we're talking about a square footage requirement, not necessarily the twenty or forty. Just, I'm, I'm struggling with just understanding it a little bit, that's why I'm asking the questions.
Well, most of the, this was unique, this...
This, yeah, historic, preserving historical building, understood.
That was very unusual, and if you looked at the technical requirements of the statute, it's a little bit unclear, but I think the board had a good position to say, yeah, it was a hardship to take down this historic building.
I think, sorry, but I was here for, for the Kings Road discussion, though, it wasn't the issue there that the hardship has to be to the property, not to the individual.
Right.
Right, so that, that was the difference.
What do I say, it was...
Any, any owner of the, the Bank Street property would have this challenge versus, in the Kings Road, it's specific to that owner.
The finances is not...
Personal, in the sense that he spent the money to buy it, to preserve it.
Right.
So, I, I mean, if you don't give them a variance, they can't use that property. I mean, that's a simple matter. And that there is, there are court cases that say, you know, you really can't deprive the owner of the use, it's gotta have some reasonable use of the property. And where it's existing, now, if he created it himself, that's a different story entirely. But this is a historic, small lot that's been there for who knows how long, and I don't know, you know, he was quoting the eighteen hundreds, was it that small then? Who knows, you'd have to, you could find out, but we're not doing that.
It wasn't based upon his, it, it was, the property was sold off by the previous owner.
The property before nineteen seventy.
Yeah.
Right.
And my question, I think it's been helpful here, is where, where do we ask a question without, you know, stepping over anything? Because typically, a question will resolve around, oh, I see we have something coming up, well, those are the ones you can't, three or more, obviously, a quorum cannot discuss.
Well, a better example, most of our cases are non-conforming structures, and most of them are non-conforming because the lot's too small, they don't have forty thousand. And we will grant them release without regard to the square footage of the lot, as long as their proposed project is not gonna be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, that's the test. The stat, neither the statute nor the court case really talks about square footage.
Okay.
The test for a special permit is, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood?
Not, it has to be, you cannot add a new non-conformity.
You can't put, no, you cannot add a new non-conformity.
So this one here was already on all sides, non-conforming, so they're not adding any no, non-conforming, the special permit, this was a variance.
They're not expanding that.
It was a special permit, it was, you know, all within the Gale law.
Right.
But the variance could've fit within that, in my mind.
Right, but the variance is, I mean, we had this one tonight, we probably don't get half a dozen a year. If we do forty cases, the other thirty-four, they're all special permits. That's mainly what we do here, special permits.
Thank you.
When you finally get into cases, they're gonna be coming from the other side of Lower County, towards the ocean, those are the ones that they're both referring to as, those properties are all...
This is, this is the size of the lot.
They're all very, very small lots down there.
Right.
Pre-existed, almost a town, you know?
Thank you.
All right, does anybody have any other questions?
I have something to add, I am not gonna be in the state for the next meeting, so...
Neither am I, but I already brought that up.
I won't be here.
Took the appointment.
You're gonna be in New Zealand.
New Zealand. Well, if Brian could make it, we'll still have five.
I am also not here.
He, he meant...
We only need, okay, three, it's a little confusing, we need three for a quorum.
Yeah.
But we can take no action without four on a particular case. You have to have four voting members to take any kind of action, so if only three come, I, I don't know, I've never asked outside council, my opinion is the only thing you could do is continue all the cases to the next meeting, because you can't act on it if you only have three members. But as long as you have four members, and what we just do is a courtesy, we don't have to, but as a courtesy, we've always given the applicant the opportunity to reschedule, to come back when we have five of us. Because if, on a four-member board, the vote for any relief has to be positive, all four, whereas a five-member board, one votes against it, four vote in favor, they get the relief.
All votes require four? It's not simple majority?
No. The only simple majority are forty Bs, but special permits and variances, you have to have four positive votes.
Thank you.
Not to speak for Brian, but I know he mentioned at the end of the meeting that there was a chance he wasn't gonna be here at the February meeting. I can be there, but that is something that would mean we only have three if he's not there. Assuming both of you guys could go.
Yeah. When Brian comes back, why don't you talk to Brian and have Leisha send out a, an email to see who can come and who can't. To everybody, that's what we get.
Yeah, and just everyone respond, so it's all, yeah, together.
And where they, everybody in the office knows. Yeah, that, that, and what has happened before, is you see, Dave speaks very knowledgeably, because he was the Chair for about eight years, so I think I've been the Chair for about forty-five minutes. So consequently...
I tried to get you to do it.
Yeah, I know.
For years.
And I nominated Brian. But anyway, the, who was I going with that? The, disregard it. Time, I think, for me to close the, the meeting. If nobody has any further discussions? Second, all right.
Did we move to adjourn yet, or no?
No.
No?
No.
I mean, he just did.
Yeah, just did.
He just moved to adjourn, he, he seconded it.
Oh, okay. All in favor, aye? Aye.
So do you get, you saw your project yet?
Officially, no.
Yes.
I still don't have a permit.
Oh, okay.
Again, I could go on...